We'll have the Planning Board back in session. The next item, there's a public hearing for 54 Massachusetts Avenue slash 15 Glenwood Way. It's a Buddhist learning center, Planning Board case 2017-04. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 21, 2017, at 8:51 in the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Hall, 1505 Hancock Street, on the application of Massachusetts Buddhist Society, 53 Massachusetts Avenue, Quincy Mass, for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance, Title 17, Section 9.5.1, a site plan review. The applicant proposes an addition to 54 Massachusetts Avenue for visitor lodging and use as a religious center. A portion of the addition will be located on a vacant portion of 15 Glenwood Way. The proposed four-story building is approximately 10,000 square feet and will further accommodate 12 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 10,998 plus or minus square feet of land and is located at 54 Massachusetts Avenue slash 15 Glenwood Way. Subject property is located within a residential B zoning district and is shown in assessment plan 2015, strike that, 2045, block 14, block 7, and map 2045, block 23, block 8. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, thank you for having us this evening to present this application. Again, Rob Fleming from Fleming &amp; Fleming.
Yes.
Another Fleming up here. I do represent the Massachusetts Buddhist Sixth Society, who has their temple located at 53 Massachusetts Avenue, which has been there for the past 30-some odd years. This proposal for site plan review involves, as the chairman had said, two properties, both owned by the temple, that's a temple, 54 Mass Ave and 15 Glenwood Way. If I may introduce the team to the board this evening. Our engineer on this proposal is Jim Burke from De Selleberg Associates right here in Quincy. Ben Long, who's our architect, he's with ARC Architects in Boston. John Shovlin, he's from Pear, he is our traffic engineer. And most importantly, Reverend Kwan Lee, who is the head of the temple, she's been there for many, many years, moving from one location in Quincy to their current location for the past 30 years on Massachusetts Avenue. So again, the site itself involves two properties, one being 54 Mass Ave. It's a little over 5,600 square feet, residence B district, currently improved by a 5,700 square foot building. And I'll get into it a little bit, but it's currently used as a residence now for visiting priests and nuns and monks of the temple. The other parcel is 15 Glenwood Way, which is adjacent behind it and right out to Glenwood Way. Parts of it border Grafton Street as well. That's a 10,988 square foot lot, also in a residence B zoning district. And again, as I said, access from both Glenwood Way and Grafton Street. And again, this is adjacent to 54 Mass Ave directly behind it. This site is improved by a residence and a garage on the vacant portion of this. Again, this is a residence right now for volunteers. It's a two-family, volunteers, three people live there today, volunteers for the temple itself. Again, the intention here, and I'll give the two, will be used as a residence for visiting priests and nuns as well. So again, the proposal before this board this evening is for a Buddhist cultural learning center. And again, it is an addition, as the chairman had pointed out, to the existing property on 54 Mass Ave. Much of it, however, will be on the kind of the vacant portion, I'll call it, of 15 Glenwood. The proposed building will be four stories in height, and I'll let Ben Long, our architect, get a little more detail with respect to the building itself. First of all, will be lobby area. Second floor is one open area, which primarily will be used for meditation. The third and fourth floors are a library. And the reverend, her service and commitment to Buddhism, has acquired through those years a lot of texts and other things for the study of the Buddhist religion. So a lot of that will be shifted from where it is today to the third and fourth floors of this proposed portion of it, again, is a library. So again, the board's role here, as you know, is for site plan review under our ordinance. It's a little specific because of the classification of this particular applicant. This applicant is a Chapter 48, Section 3. We have a specific provision. I'm not going to get into the legalities here at this venue, only to really point out your role here for site plan review. You are permitted to look at this, to review this, put conditions on this with respect to some of the dimensional requirements here. And I'm not going to get into what other relief we may or may not be required to seek at this time. That would serve no purpose right now. But certainly, there's been correspondence myself to Solicitor Timmons as well, and that will probably be discounted after this hearing here. I think what's important for this board to consider in this review here, and listen, this has been going on for some time, I've been involved for the past year, there's certain cultural differences, communication sometimes difficult. I could have been better conveying what my clients tell me to the city of Quincy, Mr. Fatsies and Councilor Crowell as well, I could have done a better job. I think it's important for this board to understand the religion itself, as I have throughout the time that I've been with them, and to understand the use of this new facility here on Mass Ave. There's been a lot of things going on, and the number one concern, we received comments from both peer review as well, as well as DPW this week, yesterday, and today, I got peer review today. There are engineering comments as well, I feel very confident, knowing Jim Burke for quite some time, knowing Mr. Long as well, those can be certainly addressed. The number one concern, all along with the city, and having met with Mr. Fatsies, Councilor Crowell as well, has been parking for this intended use. It's important, meaning for me to convey to this board, what that intended use is. This is not a facility that's going to be open to the general public. This is a library for scholars of Buddhism. It's a selected group. A lot of this is going to be done by invitation from the temple itself. You're looking at a maximum of eight to 10 real high-level scholars. Again, with the amount of volume she has in texts of this Buddhist religion, those are the people that will be visiting. During their time of educating themselves further, really promoting this religion, the Buddhist religion, there's time taken for them to meditate as well. I've learned a lot over the year about the religion itself. I probably should join, for relaxation purposes and just your insight into life generally. There's reasons for the size of this proposed building. It's a place where they go, and it really speaks volumes on what they need. And I know it's difficult to comprehend just that. I wasn't well-educated with respect to Buddhism when I first was retained by the temple. I've learned a lot in that sense. So I think the misinformation going around is, what is this use going to be? Is it for the general public? Are we going to... Certainly, the size of it concerns the city with respect to what this could potentially become. This is the reverend who's been at this location for over 30 years, as I said. This is really her legacy. Over the years, as any religious institution, things change. Our needs change. Any church, their needs change. Chairman, I know you're a part of St. Anne's Parish as well. The parishes, these institutions change over time, and their needs. This particular use is needed for this religion. You have comparable libraries at Harvard University and Princeton University, and not much where else throughout this entire country. She saw this as a need here, locally, to educate people that really want that. And it's a select number, it's not everyone. So it's important for the board to understand that, the number of people that will be at this facility. Again, you're looking at a maximum of 10 scholars at any time. With respect to staff on site, there obviously will be a librarian there on the second and third floor to assist these scholars as well. And again, the second floor of this facility will be for those times of this meditation. You're not going to have 30 people coming in to meditate. A lot of times, these scholars are on their own individually to be able to do that. They need that space to be able to do that. The temple's been a great neighbor at this location for the last 30 years. There's no intention for this to be a real detriment to the homeowners in that area. That's not their intention, we don't think it will be. We were able to respond a little bit to some of those concerns from peer review, not concerns but comments, to kind of share that with them. We did forward late today, I only got it today, peer reviews comments with respect to parking traffic. And I'm not sure if students have read that or had an opportunity to forward, probably not. So we understand that it's going to take a little bit of time for peer review consultants to review that as well, members of this board as well. So again, I don't want to get into technical stuff, I'd rather leave that to our professionals, both Mr. Burke and Mr. Long. So I will introduce, I think Jim Burke, we'll have him talk about his plans.
What happened? Do we have the box?
Yeah, just bring it up to...
I can turn it on so it's on the screen.
Yeah, bring it up to that first set, yeah, perfect. Next one. Next one. Perfect. Good evening, Jim Burke with De Selleberg and Associates with offices here in Quincy. We went out and did a land survey of this double parcel, it's about 11,000 square feet in total, and it supports basically a single-family house, a single-car garage, and what looks like more a rectory to me of some sort at 54 Mass Ave. Now, that building's going to remain, it's actually very well-maintained, it has a lot of existing landscaping that's pretty impressive. What we're doing is, we have that driveway coming into the middle of the lot off of this... But...
Can you move the phone, please?
Sure. Here. Okay. Okay. And you can see the rear parking lot. So this little paved area in here, that's where the new building's going. So what we're doing is, this grass area, we're going to pull in a, basically, a nine-space parking lot. That's the construction management plan, where we're going to be, the erosion control and construction BMPs proposed to handle the removal of the grass, et cetera. Right there is the layout for the parking lot, we're proposing that... We're coming in this direction here with a directional out. This is, it's only 10 feet wide, although this structure remains. But what we're proposing to do is to handle this additional impervious area is to, we're going to be constructing this stormwater management facility. We did some test holes out there, we found nice coarse gravels, the soil logs in the existing admissions page. Did it last summer, so see how long we've been working on this particular project. Obviously, we're bringing in new water for the proposed building. Other utilities are going to be maintained and the like. So really, the only utility, major utility improvement is really just the stormwater. And we did get, I did have a chance to go through the peer reviews, a lot of script and stuff, and Chen actually had some new comments from Quincy DPW. So I looked to actually have our half-hour conversation in his office and hash everything out. So I looked through everything, nothing really seems major to overcome for any of the site utilities and the like. So it seems like the real issue is traffic circulation and parking for this particular project. If you have any questions, I'll be sent to the audience. Thanks.
Any questions from the board?
And I'll, yeah, so I'll just touch on, you know, the part of the comments from both DPW and peer review were site circulation, where cars coming from and exiting. So again, as Jim pointed out, from Grafton entrance and then exiting onto driveway, onto Glenwood. I'll introduce here...
Sixty...
Oh, sure. I'll let John Shovlin just present his traffic findings and parking as well, site circulation.
Good evening, full record, my name is John Shovlin from Park Corporation, Foxborough, Massachusetts. We did do a traffic assessment of this. This is a load generator as far as traffic, so we didn't actually go and do an actual traffic study just because of the volumes that are existing, the volumes we anticipate based on the type of uses that occur here. As I mentioned, we anticipate to have an eight to 10 scholars here, for the most part, none of them will have vehicles, so there'll be very few vehicles on-site from this proposed development. We took a look in regards to how the circulation's going to occur, as we mentioned previously, it's going to be one-way circulation, coming from Grafton and exiting to Greenwood. We did get a chance to take a look at the comments from Stan Tech to provide, and then one of the comments in regards to site distance coming out of the site. The driveway that's being proposed is near the crest of the curve in that area, so you do have this site distance looking in both directions as you're exiting out from the roadway. With the layout of the roadways, with the intersections nearby, you're going to have cars going low speed, so site distance shouldn't be that big of an issue, especially when you're pulling out of that area, just cars can't get the speeds in the shortens of that aspect of these intersections. So we don't see any issues in regards to safety with the layout that's going to occur here. And then, as far as traffic capacities in the area, the type of use you're going to have, we don't anticipate significant or any impact to the traffic out there, and we don't see any reduction in regards to traffic capacity or safety. Pretty straightforward in regards to that, and I'll be here if there's any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Well, now, Ben Long will present.
Thank you. Good evening. So this park here is, Rob just mentioned, is Buddhist culture center. So the floor level is from the lower level, because the style is so, almost like a story. So Massachusetts Avenue is a three-story, and from the lower level is a four-story. I'm showing the computer model, different way. The layout, the first floor, is a Buddha home, basically, there's going to be a Buddha, it's an earlier site, shows a Buddha, it's just kind of spiritual for the scholar to pay tribute to Buddha. And like there in the office, will be on the first floor. Second floor is the meditation home for the scholar. And here, Rob just mentioned, this will be selected scholar, and the reason, excuse me, this temple is Reverend Su Her Kriya. She corrected, really, as a Buddhist, un-Buddhist. This is one of the most treasured sutra, and with Su, the clinic dynasty, which empire always have thousands of scholar to create this hundred volume of the Buddhist sutra. Earlier, if I may, I'll have to show you the picture of that. That is right now, the store on the storefront, which is in this storage, bookcases, carols. And each carols, as you see here, you can only open up one being, because it really runs out of space. And this is just one of the volume, it's got one set with 100 volumes. And inside is all written in the traditional Chinese character. Only selected, few scholar can understand it. So that is really a treasure, it's like Yale University, the rare book library. So she wanted to build this facility to house all this, I say this treasure, I mean, will be one of the kind in Massachusetts or even New England. I think you probably will find one set at Harvard or Princeton, and that's all it. So this is truly, is a Buddhist, is a treasure. A very, a very good, is an opportunity, rare opportunity. So going back to the plan, it's storefront and the fourth floor will be like... And I will show you a little bit of the branding. The reason it looks like a four-story, as I mentioned, decided was drop of storage from Mass Ave to Grafton Avenue. So we're able to take advantage of that. So the massing of this building is basically matching existing wood ridge to create the bottom set height. And if you have time, allow me to show you the computer model generally. And that's the view of the existing building. And that's with the new additions. So from the Mass Ave, it really is the same height. Going from the, another view from the Mass Ave, you see here, the street is so big. And that's the proposed view, proposed view. Next view is probably Grafton Street. That's the existing building. And that's the sub-approach.
Good question. Are those gray areas, those existing dwellings?
This, which one?
Those just those plain gray buildings on the left.
Yes, those are existing houses.
These are the house, those are existing houses.
Okay.
But that's the elevation, you can see here, this is a store, a street store from, almost my stomach. And that's the view from the western elevation. So that's, I think, is the overview of the building for some of the, the whole, right?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Just the board. So the board may ask why, why here? As I said, our office has been working with the temple and the reverend for over 30 years. When they moved from Alston to Massachusetts Avenue, they've made that investment over the past 30 years. Again, things change, the needs become more, more and more, this has been in the purchase of other adjacent properties, the two of them here, to suit their needs. To pack it up and move elsewhere is difficult. Quincy has been very important to them, it was a reason they came here from day one, some demographics, some without universities here in Boston as well, educated group, as well as the scholars that will be coming here to use it. And again, not many exist today with the volume of text the reverend has today. So it's important for the promotion and the service of this particular religion that it does move forward. So it's a real need for her to try to accomplish this. And we appreciate your time and listening to us present this. The reverend is here as well, if you have any questions that I can answer, which I'm sure there may be, she's here to answer those too. Doesn't speak English, so it's difficult to convey that, but we do have a translator too, if you have questions specifically for her.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, it is a public hearing, so I'd ask anybody that wishes to speak to come forward, identify itself. And if someone doesn't feel comfortable in coming forward, then we have sheets on the windowsill over there. So anybody wishing to speak on this side?
I just want to make a quick comment. I just want to say that John Rochell, 62 Grand Mall Road, I support the Buddhists. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? We have correspondence from Councilor Crowell, which I will read into the record. Suggested to the chairman and members of the board, "My regrets for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. I'm writing with respect to the..." James, really just do. Okay. "I'm writing with respect to the expansion plan for the Buddhist temple located at Mass Ave, and requesting that you keep the public hearing portion of the case open." I always, with several other residents have legitimate concerns regarding the application and the direct impact of the neighborhood. I would, if you would allow, like to participate in the dialogue with you at the next hearings. Respectfully, Brad Crowell, Wetsu County. So this is the first pass, I'd extend a motion to continue this public hearing to, what is it, July 1?
July 19.
July 19.
July 19. Continue. So move. Second? Allos in favor? Aye. So we'll continue this to July 19.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And certainly, I'll continue my dialogue with Councilor Crowell to educate them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got some business items. Thank you. Mr. Director. Well, so, I... Okay, under the business items, new business, 1534 to 1538, 1546, 1550. The 1556 Hancock Street preliminary subdivision, Planning Board case 2017, subdivision dash 01, review, proposal by Hancock Business Center LLC and American Eagle Investment LLC, 20 Lyndon Street, Alston, Mass, for preliminary subdivision approval of the planning board under the city of Quincy's rules of regulations for subdivision. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 1534 to 1538, 1546, 1550 to 1556, Hancock Street, into three new parcels and create a new right-of-way named Road A. Do we have plans?
Yeah.
Have they been circulated?
They have been circulated, chairman. This is not technically a public hearing?
No, I understand, but it's preliminary.
It is a preliminary. Listing as a business item on the agenda is for the benefit of any interested members of the public to attend. is for the benefit of any interested members of the public to attend. Certainly, you can continue this and have an opportunity to vet plans that you were given, it being a preliminary.
Yeah, I, I, my concern would be the input from, from the city departments. Okay. Engineering specifically.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right. It's a preliminary. And I think we have, again, I haven't looked at, I know it's chapter forty-one, but I think we have something like sixty days.
I believe it's sixty.
Yeah. To review and comment.
Yes.
And prove a disapproved with conditions.
Correct.
And it is, and, and if we did not approve it, then they can just move forward and go into the definitive stage, which will necessitate a public hearing. So that being the case, and we haven't got any comment back, I would recommend that we continue into the July nineteenth board meeting. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next business item is hundred to hundred thirty-four parking way preliminary subdivision, planning board case two oh one seven, subdivision dash oh two. So we do a proposal by parking way Q L O C, twenty Lyndon Street, Austin, two two one three two. The applicant is proposing to subdivide one hundred to one hundred thirty-four parking way into three parcels and create a new right-of-way named Road A. Same situation, I assume.
Correct.
So with extended motion to continue this to a board meeting on the nineteenth of July. So second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is new business, one hundred nineteen to one fifty-one parking way preliminary subdivision, planning board case two oh one seven, subdivision oh three. The applicant is proposing to subdivide one nineteen to one fifty-one parking way into three new parcels and create a new right-of-way named Road A. So this is, we continue this to our meeting on the nineteenth of July. Capital motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last item, do we have the?
Yeah, the plan's on the table in the back here, the signature.
So that, that's one I alluded to earlier, namely the forty-six Walcott Road. And we will endorse the approval not required. Hearing no other business, a motion to adjourn. Thank you all. Sorry for being tardy.
You're actually impressed to get here when you did.
Well, I would have been glad except that the-